I'd like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order, and we'll start by a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did want to note that this meeting is being recorded by NRST in conjunction with the Templeton Community TV, TCTV, and it's provided to Templeton, Philistine Cable Access TV for anyone's viewing pleasure. I will take a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes for March 20th when someone is willing to make one.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a second. Would anybody like a few more minutes to go through them?
They will.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, motion passes, do not exist.
Do I have to stand if I wasn't here?
Nope. Next up, bills and payroll. I would take an action to recommend to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented.
Have a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Are there any questions, comments about the bills and payroll?
We do have a comment.
Okay.
I have a comment. When we have reimbursement and that comes out of student activities, we should know that it's reimbursement for what? We're not getting that because we get it from the secretaries at various schools and it's just amounts, but we're not sure what for, so we'd like to know that.
Okay. Is that something that perhaps this Geister you can work with the committee on having to write?
Thank you.
I do just also, my only other comment is Ms. Robishod is out. She has a medical issue and hasn't been able to come, and she is on our warrant committee. So I think Mrs. Matson has stepped up to sign in her stead. If in fact, and I've been in touch with her, if she will be out for a further length of time, we'll look to have a substitute on a regular basis to work with you. You guys signed the warrants, so we'll take that number advisement next month when we need it. Okay. Do we have a student representative tonight? There was a bunch of activities happening, so I don't believe we do. We will go to the Project 351 Student Representatives. Dr. Casby, you want to introduce?
Well, I would be absolutely delighted to. So, we actually have two Project 351 Student Representatives, and one could not be here. I'm sorry, her name?
Jen Brandebury.
Jen Brandebury. She's playing probably softball, I would imagine. We have a lot of games going on, but we are, and I would love for Ms. LaFreniere to introduce Garrett Ranier. Okay, he is the one, just one of the two 351 candidates, and I certainly could explain 351, but I think that Garrett will do a wonderful job doing that because that is what he's been trained to do. So, I do offer to the committee, Garrett, to come on up to the, if you go up to the microphone, Garrett, so they, we can hear you on tape, and you can tell us all about everything 351.
In 351 words or less.
Yeah.
And I think for just a little bit of background, many of you were on the committee last year, so this may sound kind of familiar, but just for some context for how these students were chosen, because the goal of 351, as Garrett will talk about, is state unity and youth leadership, which is something that's very near and dear to me and many educators. So, teachers are solicited for their input on certain qualities that students have exhibited over the years, and that includes leadership, dedication, and community, et cetera, et cetera. So Jennifer Brandebury and Garrett were both representatives that were chosen by our teachers to represent both the towns of Templeton and Tildenston as part of the, as two of the 351 cities and towns in the state.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to inform you what Project 351 is and what we do. Project 351 is a nonprofitable organization that chooses ambassador from each town in Massachusetts to represent their town. We do community service for those in need, such as helping homeless shelters, gathering clothes for people in need, organizing food drives, et cetera. So far this year, we participated in launch day for us new ambassadors on Martin Luther King Junior Day as remembrance for him and his wife, Cora Scott King. During this time, we all went ahead to participate in community service with my group helping a homeless shelter cook and give gifts to the workers. Many other groups participated in other services, like gathering toys for kids. In addition, we have participated in spring service. This is where we ran a clothing drive for Crayles to Crans, which is another nonprofitable organization, to gather clothes for those who need it. With the clothing drive me and Ambassador Jenny Brandebury ran, we were able to send out 10 bags of clothes to Crayles to Crans with another three to the Salvation Army. As you can see, Project 351 is a great organization that is always working to help those in need with much more to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to have the air on squad here. Project 351 has a launch day, which Garrett described as happening in January, where all the newly, or newly minted ambassadors get together with the governor in the State House. What I'm going to ask Garrett to kind of talk about is how this continues to evolve throughout the year, because it's not a one and done kind of thing. It's not just one party that they go to. So if you wouldn't mind just telling them like we were talking about.
So, they kind of send, they send out emails once in a while about what we're going to do later on, and the next event that's coming up is reunion at Joliet Stadium for all the new ambassadors, and we go there and they talk about the impact we had through spring service, and then we just kind of hang out.
Garrett, I have a question. Does the superintendent get to go to that?
And the answer is no.
Thank you, Garrett.
I have a question, and I don't expect that, Garrett. You probably have the answer, maybe you do. I believe this particular project, 351, has been in effect for, since 2011, I was about five or six years, so it's a couple off. Do our previous ambassadors get involved with the current ones? Do you have a network? Because really, if it's 2011, you've got your seniors who get it all the way down. Do we as a school, have we thought of, are we doing, could we plan to do something to make sure that these ambassadors from the two towns, but all the grade levels, continue with this involvement?
It being my first year at Narragansett, I'm not sure how much they've done to this point, but in the school that I've been in previously, it is a big push that students do stay together as a building, where the ambassadors get picked year to year, and there are some that do stay in touch with the ambassadors that they meet when they go to their launch day and continue to get involved in these organizations that do service. So it really does go beyond just the one day and the one year. So I would be very interested to have the other ambassadors throughout the years on, we have the senior, and I mean with Jen and Garrett, see where we can do local and continue.
Any further questions or comments from the school committee? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, Garrett.
Please pass along to Jenny as well, our thanks.
All right.
The auditor report?
He's running a little bit late, so if we could maybe skip it and come back.
Okay, we have, next up is the business managers' report. Anything?
On your grant sheet, the new grant for the summer curriculum writing is on there. We got the first payment, but it won't actually happen until after school's out. Other than that, it's nothing unusual.
Anyone on the committee have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Is that, excuse, I do, I guess, is that online or do we have it here?
It's online, unfortunately.
It's online, okay.
Yep.
Sorry, I didn't have the key.
Thank you. No, no, I just needed to know that it was there.
Next up is the CPR update. There was a SPECT survey that happened, and I know that Dr. Sol Varas is here to speak with us. I don't know if Dr. Casby, you wanted to introduce the subject?
Absolutely. So, as, and honestly, I believe it was somewhere around the area of October, November, Dr. Sol Varas came to at least address the CPR just in general, and the findings and the work that we had done and were doing in order to, you know, in order to tweak a few things that needed to be fixed. So, John is on a pretty tight schedule from DESI to submit items to keep in communication, and we thought it would be, and one of the items that we had to do was, that needed to be done, was a survey, and that's just one of many, quite frankly, many items that needed to be done. So, John's obviously here to talk about that specifically, but obviously give an update to, you know, of what we've done since we've last spoken.
Okay, so, so since the last time I spoke, we've actually had several different reporting periods. As early as September, our first reporting period, we received our original report, or the final report from the CPR, back at the end of August, and we had gone through some training with DESI, who actually came out at that time and talked about a couple of the different things relevant to civil rights with bias reviews in the survey that they wanted us to kind of gear up towards. Since then, we've also submitted reports in December, also in March, and we're gearing up for another report in May. And actually, right now, kind of playing phone tag because our updated report from the March report came to us during the vacation break. So originally, we started out with 19 citations. Now, it sounds terrible, except the good news was that they were all partially implemented items, which meant that we were already doing at least most of the work that needed to be done, and we just needed to do some tweaking along the lines. Now, for us in special ed, we're down to basically about two compliance issues that we are still addressing, and that has to deal with compliance for writing IEPs. One for initials and reevaluations, and also one for like annual reviews. So the reporting that goes along with that is basically, we will supply a report by May 31st of 20 records in each one of those categories that shows that we're in complete compliance with the timelines that are needed. There are still three civil rights compliance issues that we're, we continue to work on. We are looking for some clarification on specifically if there's anything in the language relevant to our policies that needs to be addressed. So civil rights items, 10A, B, and C, are the ones that we're trying to address right now. Basically, 10A has to deal with suspensions relevant to students on IEPs, and one of the things that we did do when we were addressing this was that we looked at the student handbook, and we ended up redrafting the entire student handbook and paid particular amount of attention to the language that's relevant to disciplining a student who's on an IEP. I believe what they're looking for is also some tweaking, possibly to the policy, and again, that's why I'm trying to look for clarification right now. The 10B civil rights piece is really relevant to bullying prevention and intervention plans, and I think what they're looking for here is for some further training evidence from us, that we're actually, we've updated the policy, we're getting it out to folks. So some of the guidance has been, can you send it out, notification of where to find it, put it on the website, do a one-call, newsletters, notice to parents, whatever that might actually get that information out there. And also, the last item for civil rights 10C is on in-school suspensions. Again, trying to look for some clarification, if they're looking for us to update language in the policies. We've sent the policies a couple of times and not really getting specific, hey, you need to, in this section, add specific language. We had actually addressed, though, the in-school suspension piece by drafting something up at the high school, which was what was asked for specifically, and it talks about tutoring and alternatives if a student is actually suspended. Oftentimes, with changes to Chapter 222 law, relevant discipline procedures for students, there is some language in there that suggests that if we are suspending students after a period of time, we do have to provide some sort of access to continued education. And there's usually four different elements of that, in-school suspensions and tutoring being, being one in the school, outside tutoring, online supports, and also alternative, like temporary placements. So we're not sure, we had that language in what was drafted up for the high school, but we're not sure if they want us to actually transition that into the policy as well. The last thing is actually relevant to English language learners, and there were three different items that we had started to address there, and we are a low-incidence district. We essentially have three kids. That is down from six kids last year, but the state actually wants something called model curriculum units developed that essentially take the WEATA standards for ELL students and our frameworks, and actually combines the two and creates lessons for those kids that are actually pulled out of class. So the person who's acting as our ELL teacher and myself, we just completed just under 40 hours of training on model curriculum units, and during our last submission, report submission, we actually submitted a lesson that we had developed as part of that submission. So we're still looking for some clarification there, you know, specifically low-incidence district, what are they looking for relevant to model curriculum units for like three individuals? We do imagine that there'll be some clarification that way. Some of the nice things, like I said, I've been kind of playing phone tag a little bit, going back and forth with DESI, our auditor there. She is also trying to plan a date to come out to meet with the administrative team, hopefully beginning of May, long before our next report is actually due, and the goal would be that by May 31st, hopefully that submission will be the last of the tweaking that we need to do. So right now, six out of the 19 items that we still have to report off on. I do have to say that over the last year, this has led to a lot of different changes for us internally. There are some things that I think even as an administrator, I take for granted relevant to what I think my staff knows about. Actually, one of the timeline compliance issues, it was kind of funny because I would say, the 45-day timeline for an initial evaluation means that once the consent is signed and we receive it, we have 45 days to hold the meeting, determine eligibility, and get the proposed IEP into the person's, the parent's hands. And it's kind of funny how many people think that I'm wrong on something like that. You would kind of imagine that as the director, people might actually take, have a little bit of weight as to what I say, but I had to basically prove it, and it was kind of like hearing it from somebody else before some of the staff would actually accept that it was, what it was correct. But it did lead to some nice conversations relevant to how we actually design those IEPs and write some of the goals. And so one of the things that's actually come out of that, in the last couple of years, we've had some really good new hires. A BCBA position that we hadn't had in the past, and also a school psychologist position that replaced a contracted provider. A school psychologist position has been really instrumental, and I don't want to sound like I'm kind of tooting my own horn here. As a former school psychologist who worked into an administrative position, I kind of realized in smaller districts that the hats that we wear are often multiple ones, and I've got to say, the school psychologist does an excellent job with training. She's been helping out with the school adjustment counselors and special ed teachers with drafting behavioral goals. She's actually worked with guidance staff quite a bit and helping them to set up goals as a department and meets with them on a monthly basis. So some of the things that we're trying to do is actually make our team kind of into a two-pronged approach, an elementary team where we're hoping to actually have school psychologists, team chairs, and then the special ed staff and the administration, and also a secondary level with the same members on it, so that it's not policing from the top down, but basically what I'm looking for is for those teams to kind of work and support each other and to help kind of like develop things along as we go along. So when things come up relevant to compliance, it is kind of funny, when I have to do my root analysis relevant to the reports, why is he asking these kind of questions? Well, you know, I have to because I'm being asked to by DESI, but, you know, it's really helpful when they actually understand how the system works, and some of the fixes that have come out of some of these issues have actually come from the staff that, you know, basically are working with these problems on a daily basis. And just with the IEP processing piece alone, you know, some people would say, well, you know, I did my job and I passed the document on to the next person, and I would have to say, and use this as example, a couple days ago, you know, that's great that you did your piece, but if you dropped a child off at daycare and you came back seven hours later and they were in the same location that you dropped them off at, you might be kind of concerned about why they were in that same spot. That's the way we have to actually treat our processes. Just because somebody's got one piece of their work done doesn't mean that it stops or that they should not be concerned about what happens later on in the process. So some of the fixes that have come out of this have come from very simple modifications that we've, we've had to make, and from making folks actually realize that they need to understand what's happening on their end before the things get to me. Any questions on anything that I've talked about or brought up tonight? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. We do.
The auditor has arrived. We did pass over you, but if you'd like to come down now, we would love to have you. Come and present.
So Amber Ray will, I've just got, Amber Ray will.
This is Chad Clark of Rosalian Clark, and he is here to go over the FY18 audits.
Hello, everyone. How you doing?
Good, how are you today?
Good.
Good for coming in.
No problem. So, yes, so this is for June 30th of 18's audit. All reports were submitted on time. The deadline for submission for a single audit recording to BEC was March 31st, in which case that was, that was all met and achieved. I'm going to start, actually, I think, by jumping in on the management letter, if that's okay. I'll probably reference back to the financial statements a couple of times, given some of the accounting changes that have happened over the last year, just to kind of update everyone on how the financials have changed due to GAZB. Nothing necessarily from the state or nothing that you all are doing wrong, just changing methods of reporting. So I'm going to start here on page two, the overview. Overall, the district had a very positive year. It increased its general fund balance unassigned, which is the stuff that, not including articles, not including conferences, things like that, basically money available for allocation by over a quarter of a million dollars, which is a nice healthy trend. I would put in there that within, within the overall balance of the 687,000 that was in unassigned, GAZB requires stabilization funds, which the state puts in trust funds, GAZB puts in the general fund. So that 51,000 was also a part of that, 687,000. Comprised within the 687,000 is a measurement that the state of Massachusetts has called excess and deficiency, and for school districts, it's a measurement to kind of keep certain limits to, you know, you're all sharing from other communities and stuff to fund. It's to kind of keep that in check somewhat. It's probably the closest example would be, if anyone's familiar with the town, it's kind of like a free cash kind of a model, and this is how the state's determined. This is a newer chart I put in. I thought, I thought it was rather impressive, to be honest. If you go back to five years ago, you'll see that the E and D was just over $100,000. And, you know, while, while a little bit of a downturn in 18, it still remained a very solid number, and it's grown to the 635,000 at the end of 18. That obviously gives the district a lot of flexibility in its ability to set its budget, adapt to, you know, the changing environment. I mean, just driving in, I saw a whole bunch more construction going on that wasn't there when I was here a few months ago doing the audit. I know Templeton's building a new school and going through some changes on their own end, you know, financially, the town's, you know, working some stuff out from prior years. So this kind of, you know, doesn't necessarily constrict the district to have to fit into anything it can't control within the town, just flexibility. I thought one of the impressive things, and probably, you know, informally, one of the proper things was that the E and D balance is what was left over after about a third of the overall surplus had been assigned to the next year's budget. And I think that's, you know, you got to meet, you got to stay under the limit, but on top of that, you guys stayed under the limit, and you gave back to the communities. And I, I think that there's that balance there that I think generates goodwill and, you know, helps people believe in the fact of what's going on here financially. The other part that's worth noting is, so when you look at the financial statements, you'll see a column for the general fund. That's your traditional appropriated budget. Then you have a school choice fund, which on Amber Ray's books is part of an overall, what we would call special revenue. That's actually so significant that it gets broken out. What's kind of impressive also on this, and definitely worth noting, and so I added it, is for the last three years, you've been spending more than what you had in a prior year balance, but you're still growing by $200,000 a year. So it reflects the fact that this isn't a fund that's growing because the district isn't, you know, turning the money back in and putting it back into the district. No, you're turning the whole thing back into the next year, funding operations out of it, and it's still growing. And, you know, for people who are listening to this now, school choice is generally, it's when, it's the shift between towns for when other town, other parents in other towns want to send their kids to the district, and vice versa, if parents want to send their kids not to this district. The fact that it's growing by $200,000 a year, I would have to assume, you know, from, you know, an untrained sociological perspective, it reflects the fact that a lot of parents outside of the membered communities want their kids to come here, and I think that reflects very positively on, obviously, what's, what's happening and how, how the outside world is interpreting what you're doing. So congratulations on that. The next section, just to be clear, these are informational items. I don't want them to be interpreted as problem items. It's more along the lines of, hey, here's what's going on, you know, just update you or something to pay attention in the future. The big, the big change for us this year, and I'm sure it probably sounds to everybody like I'm coming in every, every year and saying, OPEB changed, pensions changed, OPEB changed again. Finally, 18 was the final phase in. At the moment, there is no scheduled changes to pension and OPEBs that GAZB has passed or expected to implementation in the near future. So hopefully this will stay kind of as is. It was kind of a brutal year for us as auditors, as all the actuaries tried to figure things out and how it fits together, but it's in and implemented. The big change came from the, there was in the past a net OPEB obligation, which in very generic terms was really the commitment that the district had to those people who were retired. So if you'd retired, based on your expected lifespan, things like that, what was the district probably going to have to pay in? That changed to now match the pension changes, which is, it's those individuals as well as your current employees, and the assumption is that if you hire a teacher today at, say, age 25, just out of college, that they will spend their time working here over the course of their life. As each year goes by, they earn a piece of their OPEB benefit, and therefore to recognize that liability each of those years. So now you're, you're basically putting, for lack of a better word, the worst-case scenario on the books, which is absolutely everybody's potential liability. And, and just to be clear, the OPEB versus the pension is, it's your health, you know, insurance that you're covering for retirees, not active people. You're collecting for the active people for when they're retiring, but it's not their, not during, it has nothing to do with the time that they're presently working. That, that remains unchanged as a budget item. So as a result of that change, it ended up putting about $24 million of liabilities on the district's books, which sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, but understand that that's a $24 million liability for, say, over the next 30 or 40 years, and it's the same thing that happened with the pension a few years ago. How that impacts things, if you all have a copy of the financial statements, I'll try to just point you in a couple of locations. If you go to page 10, it says statement of net position. About halfway down the page, under non-current liabilities, it says due in more than one year, and you see this large $45,000 liability. That is actually.
Million.
Oh, sorry.
Forty-five million.
Forty-five million, yeah. Now, what comprises that, I will point you towards, let me find it here, page 29. Now, what comprises that, I will point you towards, let me find it here, page twenty-nine. And at the bottom of the page, you'll see that there's a section, long-term liability accounts. Uh, of the overall forty-four point eight million and then the smaller one point nine million above it, that totals that ending balance of forty-six point seven million that you see. So you can see that of that amount, uh, about four point nine is the debt. Capital lease obligations is about a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, compensated absences, which is the unused sick or accrued vacation, you would owe, um, the value of the, the teachers and employees haven't used would be three hundred and fifty thousand. Then you get to the big numbers. And you can see that the OPEB amount is thirty-six million dollars of the liability, and the pension is five point four. So, that's, uh, that's how that feeds in. And when, and just kinda put your hand on that page and jump back to page ten. You will see at the bottom of page ten unrestricted, a forty million dollar negative number. That's because of that liability. So, now those liabilities are long-term, you don't have to fund them. To give you an idea unofficially of what your present net position would be, um, if you're looking at, well, are we really that broke? No, you, if you took those two amounts, the thirty-five and the five, from page twenty-nine and you added them back in, you'd see that for the most part, you're basically right at break even, um, which is the general expectation of the district, that it's not intentionally designed to run out of profit. You know, it's an in and an out. So, just to kinda put some perspective to that, um, because, because they are very big numbers. Now, moving along on the same concept, you probably have heard about this OPEB trust fund, and, you know, are we supposed to be funding it, should we be funding it, where is it in this financial statement? Um, so what I'd have you do is jump over to page sixteen and seventeen. We'll start at sixteen. Okay. So, over here, you'll see there is a specific column for that other post-employment benefits trust fund. And as you voted, there was twenty-five thousand dollars as an initial balance transferred in here. So, when anyone says to you, well, where'd that twenty-five thousand dollars end up? It ended up right here. And it's over here in the fiduciary funds, because once that money is allocated and transferred, it's similar to putting it in with the pension system. It is no longer available for spending, it is locked away, you've committed it to the, um, you know, the employees of the district. That's why it's over here and not in over on the other statements, because the other statements reflect what the district has available to it. Just to kinda show you, if you jump over to page seventeen, you might say, well, where's these almost eight hundred thousand dollars and seventy- the, the actuarial determined costs. So I'm gonna tell you that is not, um, that is not necessarily dollars out the door, but the cost that your actuary determined of what OPEB, um, cost on an accrual basis was three-quarters of a million dollars this year. And you'll see that the employer contributions is the eight hundred thousand dollars. The difference is the twenty-five thousand dollars that you put away towards the savings account. So, that, that's how that works, but... So tho- those are some, you know, those are some serious numbers that as time goes on, you know, a- and any municipal entity is having to balance that whole, you know, pension, healthcare. And, and these are some numbers, just to kinda point you in the way. Is there any questions? I'm gonna move beyond OPEB at this point, but I'm-
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Do we need to add more to the, um, to that twenty-five thousand, um, under the other post-employment benefits?
Yeah, the, the goal is to, um, to treat it very much like your pension system. In, in difference of the pension system, you, there's separate entities that run that and then they assess you, y- your bill. In this case, there is no separate entity for OPEB, you're kinda running it in-house, so it's like self-assessing. In contrast to pension, the pension, there's a law on, in Massachusetts that says all pension systems have to be fully funded by a certain date. There is no such law at this time relative to OPEB. So a lot of people are saying, hey, we're gonna put some money into OPEB and then, you know, two thousand and forty is the deadline for the pension system, so, but some systems are gonna be fully funded by, you know, early two thousand and thirties. It all depends. They're gonna, they're saying, well, we're gonna kick that can down the road, and then what we're gonna do is we're gonna take some of that pension assessment money when we don't have to pay it to the county or the state, and we're gonna put it into our OPEB. And that's perfectly fine, um, a- as a long-term strategy. What I would encourage though is the liability itself, that forty-five million dollars, um, that's the net liability. One of the ways to move that liability down is to fund it more. Because as you put money into this trust fund, it lowers the net liability. Conversely, what happens is for anyone who's sat through any kinda like finance or accounting classes, have you ever heard the term time value of money? It's that thing, the more, i- it's like when they say, hey, if you, uh, you know, if you, if you put, uh, fifty dollars a month in your 401K plan, when you retire, you're gonna have two million dollars, you know? It's the idea that not only are what you're putting it in, but what you put in is earning interest, so that what earns in, the interest you earn is money that the district never actually has to like pay in. So it's like having a bank or investors pay your OPEB. That's the goal to increasing the twenty-five, uh, thousand balance upwards. Additionally, the more you put in, and depending on how it's invested, what the actuary can use is a more, um, a more aggressive discount rate, which is saying, hey, you're putting more money in, you're earning more interest. When they lower the discount rate, it also lowers the liability, um, that's attributed to the district. So, that you, to a certain extent, depending on how you manage it, you can lower that forty-five million dollars more aggressively than just saying, hey, we'll put twenty-five thousand dollars in. So there's, you know, there, there's ways to impact that liability with some planning and management. So the answer is yes. What, what I would kinda point out in that regard, uh, one final thing, is, uh, some of the information relative to the pension and, uh, OPEB is located at the back. Uh, if you go to page forty-five, you'll see that it's kind of a short summary of where some of those numbers, where the actuarial numbers came from. Like you'll see that, uh, the third number down is benefit payments, and that's the seven hundred and seventy-four thousand that the actuary calculated, we put on the thing. But then there's some interest costs, this, this is all the actuary stuff. I, I would have, I would, I would have you address it with them if you wanna more direct answer. But you, that's how you get down to that thirty-five point nine million dollar liability. And then you see the twenty-five thousand dollars and the net liability. And then you see that number where it says point zero seven percent. The goal ultimately on that is to get that to a hundred percent. So-
Or a little off.
A li- little off, but you know, you're not the only ones in that boat. But just to kinda put something to it, the goal is to get that twenty-five thousand dollars to equal the thirty-five point nine million up above it, and, and go from there. The other-
Next year.
Yeah. So, that's, um, you know, tha- that's kinda how to follow your way through that a little bit, uh, on that end. Any other questions? Okay. A couple of things, uh, just, uh, pretty standard, our student activity, you know, just keeping everybody, you know, don't forget about them, there, it's, uh, D E C requires a three-year, you know, generically the term is, people you throw in as audit, but it's really an agreed-upon procedure, uh, that has to be done by a CPA firm on the outside. The off-years, there's supposed to be some internal, um, audits done to, uh, to watch over them, so... Right now, you're, you're in an off-year, we don't have to do it again until the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, so we'll do it sometime in two thousand and twenty-one at that point. But, uh, the, the last, uh, in June of eighteen, we completed a report for fiscal year ended of June of seventeen, so I, I believe you guys have copies of that. You know, if anyone wants to see it, um, i- it's, it's around, it's a separately issued report, um, from before. The next page, page five, is something that kinda has blindsided everybody a little bit. And, um, it actually applies to everyone, uh, to the district here. So, the state has changed some of the rules recently with regards to capital leases and how to budget for them and things like that. Actually, the S E C has now stepped in and mandated some municipal, um, regulations, you know, for everyone, but, you know, municipalities didn't get exempted from this one. And, um, while the term S E C is very rarely heard around here, um, i- it's a very serious, um, re- regulation that shouldn't be ignored. And what it says is that, um, there's, there's filings that have to be done, relative to, um, when lease transactions are entered into. And capital leases is one of them, of which you do. Now, what is generally happening is your debt advisor are kinda stepping up and saying, well, the S E C's not kinda treating this like debt, this is kind of our territory, we'll help you through it and tip you through it. But I know in about, what, a month, there's gonna be a new round of capital leases for laptops, I think, usually. Usually it's May, June.
Maybe not, but generally speaking, yes.
Yeah. So, that would be, this became effective in February. So there wasn't much of a short window, so if you enter into that, definitely give UNAB a call and talk to them about, you know, what has to be filed and how, and they'll help you through it. A- as it is a regulation, we did wanna make you aware. So we'll jump over now to page six. You know, these are the things that, um, we ran across, or we'd wanna maybe be seeing, looking to see some improvement. And, and admittedly, I don't want anyone to think, oh, that seems low. It, it's gotten a lot thinner, uh, over the years. So, um, you know, everything is still trending in the right direction. Thing, some things just take a little, you know, a little longer to implement than others. And, you know, and then sometimes there's new things that, uh, happen within the district that, um, you know, pop up. So the first one is, is the withholding accounts. Now, I know in this regard, um, i- it's still here, but there's been a lot of work put forward into it to kinda get them squared away and figured out. They, um, I know AMRE kinda, it wasn't right when you inherited it. The pro, one of the biggest problems with the holding accounts is, is it can go back years and years and years. And the other problem that makes it particularly challenging in a school district is because of the lump sum payroll that happens in June and trying to like figure out how that impacts all the other months. And, and items like that i- is very tricky. Plus you have, you know, um, you have a significant amount of your personnel that once or twice a year can turn over quite significantly. Um, so you've got people coming on, people coming off, you know, thi- things like that. So, there's still a little bit of work to be done with it, but it is moving in the right direction. Uh, i- is, is the bottom line on that. Reporting of debt, this is one of those new things, hasn't been in the past, but I think this is, um, this is probably the first ban you guys have issued since we've been here. You know, most of it has been either your own money or state grant. I know, like, one of the things you'll see is that the boiler project finally closed out. You know, that won't even show up next year. But that was a mixture, uh, really too largely of state, you know, state grant money and, and your own, so... Uh, and in this case, I believe it was related to the bleachers. And, um, there's different, uh, short-term debt is recorded as a liability, long-term debt is required, i- is on, in U M I S accounting, which is the state's accounting system, is recorded as revenue. In this case, they were banned, they got put in as revenue. We're just addressing the fact that should've been liabilities. You are one of probably half a dozen communities that did the exact same thing. So it's, it's, it's not all that irregular for that to happen. But it, it's addressed here. Tailing's checks, um, it's not a big number, um, i- it's, you know, it's eleven thousand dollars. But it's the idea of, you know, just finally getting them off and addressing it. Tailing's checks are one of those things that just kinda keeps haunting you, they don't, you know, they don't disappear on their own, and the farther out you go, the harder it is to track down the people who those checks were written to. The state has some very, probably, I would say, um, good laws with regards to it, to keep it in check. But there are also some, some, um, very challenging laws to do it and do it right. So, it, it kinda slows up the process. Student activities, uh, we, there's some revenue recording. The model, uh, that's happening, i- and it's been going on for a little bit, is that the revenue's all coming in to student activities, that's fine, but you have multiple schools. And what's happening is the s- the revenue is coming in into one big pool of revenue, whereas the expenses are coming out by the schools. And what you're not left with is, you're not really left with on the general ledger, a, what is the balance for this school? What is the balance for this school? You're more left with what is a balance for all schools. And, uh, so the, the mechanics are all there, it's more of a matter of just kinda tweaking how that, those receipts get, um, recorded in. I believe for the most part, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the cash balances in each of those funds are really the trigger, because each of them has their own bank account. So, it's not this like, oh, is this school getting this school's money? Not necessarily, because even though the fund balance is kinda pooled, the cash is still segregated and allocated by the schools. So, there is a, uh, you know, there is a model to getting to the numbers. The, uh, the la- the, the last one on the bottom of that is just, um, you know, something we've kinda been pushing along in. We're actually pushing it everywhere, um, these days, the, uh, the turnover forms. These are the forms that when any various office or department, uh, in the school collects money, they're supposed to turn it over to the treasurer. How the treasurer knows what this is for is what is called a turnover form, Form nine-ten. On that form, it gives kind of a description, uh, line and an amount, and people can kinda just pencil it in. And, a lot of times now, um, there, there's, we've been pushing it to move beyond just somebody penciling in, oh, this is, you know, uh, you know, fundraiser May. Okay, what was the fundraiser, you know, what were you selling, what were you doing, you know? Was, you know, it may come across that somebody, you know, be like, hey, superintendent, did you know that this school was out fundraising on this? And surprisingly, you might be like, no, we didn't know that was going on, no, the school committee hadn't approved it. So when things are generic, it can still go in as cash, but it loses its definition. One of the things we have is a little bit of a challenging thing, is that there's a few transactions at the end of the year, coming out of June and into July. And when we're looking into July and saying, well, you know, when, when, you know, when did this activity happen that generated this revenue? Because maybe we need to accrue it backwards. Sometimes we're having a hard time figuring out, like, okay, was, was this a June activity with the money turned over in July? Or was this a July activity? The other thing is too, is the, and not to pick on them, but they're specifically, um, but they're a very good example of why we're pushing this, is, uh, school lunch. Now, back when I started twenty-plus years ago, everything was handwritten, you know? It was like, okay, we collected this many tickets and served this many meals and here's the money. Well, as you as parents would know, you know, you don't deal with cash hardly anymore. It's, no, you pay into this automated system and the kid walks through and it reduces the balance. And, you know, once a week, once a month, you build the balance back up. To account for all that, there's an electronic system that can print a report, that can, out of the system, that can say, um, you know, not so much how many meals are collected, but this is how much we collected from parents to replenish the balance. Okay, so in the past, that might've been somebody sitting there and writing in that number. Okay, it's pretty obvious to see that there's a certain enhanced level of risk to fraud, not accusing anybody of anything, clearly. But when anyone can just write in whatever number they want, it's real easy to just, you know, maybe not do something that they should. Whereas when you say, no, we want a weekly transaction report out of your system to be stapled to the back of that turnover form, and that report total for what you collected needs to equal what went into the bank? Okay, now we're talking, you would have to have somebody be able to manipulate the system, which is, very few of the employees within, let's say, school lunch have that level of access to begin with. You know, it's no longer the, you know, the, the typical people in the cafeteria wouldn't have that access, it's now your management. access, it's now your management. So, you can see why that's a better version of the world, you know? You have football games, you know, there's really no system yet, but so you're still relying on, okay, we had this many tickets and, you know, you know, we filled the bleachers this much. But as time goes on, departments are having more of this, you know, for tracking purposes, you know? A lot of times, there's the systems in place because you have to do reporting to the state. And invariably, you look and you're like, oh, wow, there's actually a financial report built into this, or one that you could. So, that's kind of where we're going with that. I know I kind of took it a little farther, but as I said, for us, when you come down to, in our side of the world, if receipts are being taken inappropriately, a lot of the times, you're gonna, people are gonna find that this 910 form, you know, it could have been a preventative, it could have been a preventative tool if it was enhanced. And so, there have been changes in the past, it has gotten better, I don't want anyone to think it hasn't, but we still want to just kind of push that a little harder. And then, the final one, I guess I would, you know, we've had it in here a couple of years. I'm not going to be inclined to take it out, because I think, I think it is a very strong long-term consideration the district should consider. I know I received a couple of phone calls from Anne-Marie, I know there were some potential questions about some changes in the financial personnel and how the office would maybe have to be revamped. And this is one of these exact things I'm talking about. Right now, you're running a payroll every week. A lot of places, and there's nothing wrong with it, run it every other week. Everybody still gets their same amount of pay, I mean, there's that one little thing everybody's like, oh, I gotta go a week without pay, but you have this wonderful option of the fact that, for the most part, everybody's payroll cuts off in June and you could bring them back at a September timeframe with the rules changed and it's, they've had months to adapt to it. But what we're talking about is, you're talking about half the less payroll warrants to process. You're talking about giving a payroll clerk a week of, and I use this term very loosely, I hate to say, of nothing to do. But that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is not a week of nothing to do, we're talking about a week of freeing up someone so that you can maybe rearrange the duties within that office to better fit the needs of the financial offices. You know, we look at like that payroll withholdings account and the balancing out, well, you know what? That's twice as easy too, because instead of having weekly ins and outs going out, it's no longer 52 transactions that have to be looked at in and out, it's only 26. It's easier to manage for other people just beyond this. So, it's one of those things that, you know, it doesn't have to change, but I think from, you know, a resources perspective, it's definitely, you know, it's definitely something that could benefit the district significantly. And as I said, you've just got to get over that, I know it's got to be approved usually by the unions and stuff, and there's that one hurdle of, but that one week, but as I said, in contrast to towns that implement this where it is literally people getting a paycheck every week and working every week throughout the summer, you have kind of a nice clean cutoff to implement something like that. That's pretty much what I have.
So, overall, it sounds like they're doing a great job.
Yeah.
With some room for improvement.
Yeah. No, no, I really don't have any, any real significant concerns.
Good.
You know, I think, honestly, I think if, you know, what you're potentially looking at is the fact that I think financially, you're stronger. You know, you know, I know the year we started, Anne-Marie kind of just went into that role that she's in now for the first time, and, you know, she had to learn the job. But now, it's, you know, we're having, you know, more advanced conversations and I'm coming in and stuff is adjusted, you know? There's been things like, you know, reporting, the balance sheet reporting to DOR and, you know, how we can cut back and make that easier and stuff. And that's all kind of been implemented in-house. So, I think what you're kind of looking at is a, you know, you know, you've had your superintendent for a couple of years now, you know? If he's not planning, if he's planning on staying, then, I mean, you got a team that's working, you got a team that's working very good. And I think you're gonna find it's gonna open some doors for maybe newer areas that you can explore financially, you know, or, you know, more project-based stuff to enhance, you know, what's going on here. So, yeah, no, I think, I think you've, I think the district is well-positioned for the future at this time.
And I don't think this is a question, I'm sorry, I don't think this is a question that you can answer, but I guess it's just more, how do we change that weekly to bi-weekly? Is that really a contract issue?
Yep. It's in the contract, I would care about it.
Is it a contract? I know. So, then I'm always.
I would just say, I would suggest that we take the next negotiating meeting that we have, take that, I don't know what I did with that, that thing that I just, yeah, that whole thing, and present it to the union and say, we need to get this off of our list of findings and recommendations and we need to.
I know we've talked about it before.
But, I mean, actually bring this and say, this is what they say, we need to get this off our list.
Even just for the, let's just say, because I'm very familiar with it, for the purpose of, you know, you have fully, the employee fully pays for their long-term disability, well, you got to take that monthly, multiply it up by 12, divided by the number of deductions, and when you have a bi-weekly and a weekly, there's so much room for error that it's difficult. And, you know, we want to hold the person who's putting it in accountable, but, you know, it's hard.
Yep.
It's hard to track, so that's, we need to change that, what we have talked about before.
It can be a slow process. You know, and I'm not, I would be, I would be remiss to say everybody's gonna be on board and you can get it done in a couple of months, that's, that's not going to be what it is, but I think you're kind of right, is it's, you know, at least, you know, the concept is present it, get people thinking about it, see where it goes. You know, as I said, it's, it's an efficiency thing, and you're right, you know, it is, it is that many less transactions for people to enter and possibly incorrectly. You know, we're all only human, so.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vass for.
Good job.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes, I think I remember when I started on the committee, there was quite a few more things, because certainly reflects the attention to detail.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask the committee to indulge me for just a moment. I see Mr. Rathbone is here, and we have him like way down the list. And he should only take, I'm hoping if you take any more than a few minutes, then this trip is much bigger than you've led on. But if the committee would indulge us, we could move that item up and we could hear about this field trip proposal.
There are two.
There are, oh, there's two, I'm sorry.
And I can talk, I can speak to the second one, so please.
Okay, yep, so if you would like to say, if you want to introduce any.
I don't, yeah, I don't have enough to.
Thank you.
I don't know what I've got this one.
Thank you.
So, what you have in your hand, everyone, is the school music department field trip that I'm proposing for next year's band and chorus groups. As you see, it'll be from May 1st through 3rd. My intention is to take the kids up to Montreal, Canada, and do a field trip there. If you look at the second page, there it explains what my purposes for taking the field trip are. As you are all adults, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, I trust that you can do that on your own. I will point out some things, if you want a more, less PowerPointy version, there is a schedule about three-quarters of the way back, it just spells it out in that fashion. And if you want it even more brief, there is a bullet point version on the very last page that kind of spells it out even more there.
So, we're all going to.
It talks about the things that we'll be doing. The very back page details the cost per person. I'm expecting to typically, as we normally do with our band and chorus trips, take between 30 and 35 people, that's including our chaperones. Based on that number, we would take one bus, and based on the cost of one bus, you see the breakdown of, based on occupancy of room. Now, I do know that that is a significant dollar amount on the back. However, because of that, I've been working with our band booster president, who already knew last year.
He's waiting to us.
Who already knew last year that I was planning on putting together a trip for the 2020 year, so starting at this past fall, we started the fundraising process to get the children a chance to start hewing money for their accounts. Amongst them, right now, we're even running, and I'll push it forward for anyone who wants a copy, our night fundraiser, where you may go and buy cutlery. The cards right here lead you to our website, that the money we bring in can be directed to any student that you may know who might be going on this trip as well, and this is running for this two weeks. We'll also be doing our Read the Fundraiser next year, we're already looking at other fundraisers, we're looking to redo our mattress fundraiser again this coming year, because we did significantly well on that, and that also gives the students a chance to raise money to put towards their trip, to bring that overall cost down so that it's not a burden on the parents that are there. I'm looking to take between five and six chaperones from my parent group, as well as since I get two free director slots to inquire if one of our middle school directors would also like to come along for the ride and be an extra on-staff person. Since we'll be crossing national lines, obviously, we would want to get the kids their passports. Canada does require anyone below the age of, above the age of 15 to have their passports in hand, so I'd want to tell them now about next year so that when the time comes, they can spend the summer getting their passports cleared up and make sure they're ready to go, so that we can submit them to the proper immigration authorities at that time. And we'll also be hiring, hiring, we'll be bringing along a nurse to function in that capacity, so if any kids need things such as nightly or morning meds or any other thing that might unforeseen happen, and we would have a nurse on staff with us to do that. And I'd probably be asking someone like Mr. Joy, who does have a student in the program, if she'd be interested in filling that capacity.
And that's all factored into the per-person call?
Yes, all those things are factored in.
First off, thank you for bringing this to us in advance. It's been nice to see so many of these trips with so much lead time, because as a parent, every time a trip comes up, obviously, every student wants to go.
Oh, yes.
And money, and so, the more time, the better. One of the things that we have been asking with our bigger trips, we've done it with the last year's Dominican trip and the upcoming London and Paris.
Yes.
Is, have you done a parent meeting yet to gauge interest and get some, I'll call them soft commitments? Because one of the things that we've discussed is we want to make sure that, one, the interest is there.
Yes.
And that the parents feel it's attainable from, and I know you're doing a lot of fundraising, which is awesome, that they feel financially they'll be able to do it, because we don't want to have, you know, six kids go.
Oh, obviously.
So, I just wondered if you've been able to have that meeting yet?
I hadn't had the parent meeting yet, because I didn't want to do the go-ahead on that before you guys said it was okay to do that and then have to turn around and tell them to their face. Sorry, that was a big old story I told you. So, just from my point to maintain credibility with the parents, I tend to like to bring it to my governing body first, and then, once you guys.
Exactly what we were looking for, so, thank you for that, because what we, I think what I would look for from the committee is just the recommendation that you schedule that parent meeting and come back to us with the results and the findings from how many people are interested, and then we can look to give the final approval for the trip at that point, if that works for the rest of the committee. Any, some trip, I see it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
No, ma'am, it's May 1, 1 through 3. The original schedule we were looking at was when we were going to try to do it during spring break, but because the fact that, that would coincide with when the kids were going to go to London and Paris, Ms. Vass asked me if I would move it to the next week. I think it might be a, I might be wrong, just because I was still thinking on the spring break was going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So, we're looking at April 22nd?
No, ma'am, it'll be May 1, 2, 3.
Okay, so 1, 2, and 3 is a Friday, Saturday.
Okay, good, then I did, you are correct, sorry, except for on the spring break, mine, for a second.
Obviously, you like to look at, you know, time on learning and.
Yeah, and I tried to minimize the impact in terms of them being away from the school day, because obviously, we are in the May season, also coming close to both AP exams and MCAS exams that we'd be thinking about, and I don't want them to be away during those times, obviously.
Any questions or comments from the school committee, other than we send you forth?
I just have one question. It looks like the, there are some meals that are included, but then it looks like there may be three or four, maybe lunches or something, that the kids are going to have to pay for, is that correct?
Yes, typically, when we go on trips, and this is also mentioned in the past, the price per person covers breakfast and dinner, but because we're typically out in the community, to make things go a little bit easier, we split them up with their chaperones and they take care of lunch on their own, and that would be something we'd make sure the students knew in advance.
Okay.
I honestly, I can't, I mean, it's right now, it's a little late, so we'll go over the boosters, but our, our budget isn't going to be so high. So, if I be that, maybe the parents may, you know, where you lose, you know, you can't, I guess that I can't.
Do they would leave on Friday and come back on Sunday?
Yes, we'd leave early Friday morning, even before most of you got up that morning, we'd be out the door, and we'd be back later on Sunday night. Last year, we left at about 5:00 AM to go down to New York City, and when we came back that evening, or Thursday evening, we were back around that night. We would have probably been back earlier, but New York traffic is fun to get out of.
Thank you very much.
Please, you know, have the parent meeting and then come back, you know, schedule through Dr. Kazman's office to come back and let us know how things go, and we'll go from there.
Sure, thanks. Since our booster meeting is about two weeks, we'll schedule up for there.
All right. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
And we have one other.
Yep, also in your packet, or they were in pile, I think they're in your packet, they're in piles, I'm sorry. Ms. DRC sent a request to, in essence, repeat the Dominican Republic trip that we had this As you will see, we're talking about February vacation of 2020. This was really, honestly, as he learned last year, because he put it through, that he needed basically permission to talk about it, to generate, to see if there are, if there is any interest, et cetera, et cetera. So, he asked me about that, and I said, yes, that would be the appropriate thing to do before he went, to have any meetings or what. So, before you is something that you are fairly familiar with, just given that we've, we just went on one, but is the Dominican Republic trip request.
And he hasn't had a parent meeting yet?
No.
And I'll speak just from, only because I can add a little more information. I do know that since my daughter went on the trip, a lot of the students came back very excited about, can we do this again? And I said, well, can you pay for it again? It's going to be, but, so I do know that, I think that precipitated, was part of the precipitation of this.
Exactly, it's actually part of the conversation, I think we had last month, was that it, before, before it kind of took a life of its own, he wanted to make sure that he put a request in before he did any of the, any of it.
Any comments from the committee? Should we let him go forth and solicit regular interest? And see where it comes out? Okay. Okay.
The interest that we were talking about, I know, was the students that came back. But do we know if it generated a whole bunch of interest from other students or was it...
I can speak to that. So, um, the answer simply is, oh, yeah. It's, um, you know, these kids came back energized to a point that some have changed their direction in terms of what they, where they want to go to college, what they want to learn. This service learning, I think, is an easy word to say. It's also yet another word to actually live in. So, these, they can, I think, James said this, they've come back changed. Certainly, other kids, right? Other fellow students have seen this and literally want to be part of that change. But, you know, yeah, it's, it's really kind of taken, before it took literally a life of its own. We wanted to make sure we got this before the boards, that way if he's having conversation, folks know, because it, it's one of those conversations that goes, you know, just like all the other trips as well. So, he wanted to make sure that he got this before you, before he even reached out.
It would be really nice if we could get that, that cost down from twenty-seven hundred. I don't know if we can get him approval for years so that they can start fundraising.
Exactly the part, so with approval, he can do all there above. He can meet with parents, start the process, that, you know, all of that with, with permission from the board.
I know Ryan would love to go again, but I said, yeah, I'm not paying that again.
Well, I think that they've learned that, so I think that that's, they need to be more aggressive. I think that was obviously the takeaway and...
And they did, they were able to raise a lot of funds.
In a very short amount of time, really.
The airfare ended up being a little less, so, you know, net-net, it was, it was good. But unlike some of the other trips, you know, the chaperones are not paid for.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's, exactly.
So, I think, go ahead.
Okay. So, you can let, Ms. DRC, you have to go forth and solicit some interest.
We've approved a number and it says name of fundraisers numerous. I get that. I get that. You can't know that. I'm not complaining about that. What I am, what I, I'm not complaining. What I'm asking for is some accountability on the fundraising. That, you know, the, the fundraising, we as a school committee should know what our students are doing and should, I mean, not the events, there, there are different kinds of fundraising, but I mean, we, we at one point had a calendar, you know, like donuts come up and that's an excellent fundraiser, but, you know, it's just accountability.
Do we have a master list of...
Well, the buildings keep them. I approve, so that all fundraisers that have anything, they come through me. They, we've talked quite a bit about making sure, because what, what you've seen, obviously, what's come before you are three international trips. Well, one has already been for you, the London, sorry, been for you. You have one to, uh, potentially up to Canada and you have this Dominican. So, we, we, they absolutely understand that, that we have got to make, we have to make sure that we're spacing these out. We know, we're not walking over, we're not stepping on people's toes in terms of fundraising. And that really has to be handled at the building level, quite frankly, because they, they are more in tune with what is going on literally in the building. In order to create a calendar, um, you know, we, we could certainly, you know, we'd have to think of a mechanism, quite frankly, in terms of, okay, you know, this is, this is what it is, this is the request, I, we put it someplace. We'd have to think about that. We do not have a mechanism in place that has a money, pardon me, a fundraising calendar, so to speak, district-wide or even business-wide. I mean, I mean, district-wide or school.
When's the London trip? Uh, April of twenty-twenty. So, this one is February twenty-twenty. The other one would be May of twenty-twenty. They're not going to compete with the fundraising.
Well, so, the London, I, yes and no, I guess. I, I believe that the London trip is kind of on its, they've been on the money-raising, you know, bandwagon for at least a year. I know, I don't know what's happened with the music boosters. I, I do see their fundraisers come through like the knives, et cetera, et cetera. So...
I have a question.
Sure.
We love our kids to do two selling things a year in that, because we don't, you know, one in this right, one in, one in the, in the fall. Most of our events are run by the boosters and there are, maybe not just sales, ones run by the boosters, kids were involved, it was us. Kind of, we, we do a motorcycle thing.
Motorcycle.
Our, our rally, the, the ride, the ride through the Legion. Legion helps us with that, I guess, as the boosters, as the students. So, that's what I'm trying to do.
Internally is what we worry about, so, I'm, I'm using candy bars as an example, I don't know. We don't need three different groups selling candy bars all at the same time for three different, there's only so many people, and you're looking at one of them, can buy, well, candy bars I'll buy. But, I mean, you're seeing the same people, so we, we do need to be cognizant of that.
I believe, and I don't know if it's still in there, because we haven't funded it or even looked at it for years, but I believe when I first got on the committee, the school committee, there was a line item for fundraisers for, um, school trips or something like that.
Field trip.
Field trips. And I believe the school committee used to put money into that line item and it would, it would benefit the children of the district and it would basically fund their field trips instead of, you know, PTO's fundraising and that type of thing. And I believe because of the, um, the financial situations that we've all through, we've just kind of, you know, pulled money out of any account that we could and have never gone back to look at it. But I'm wondering if we should eliminate so much fundraising and asking of parents for money, if we should put some money into that account again.
So, I would say, I, I think I remember seeing some monies in the line, so I think, I think there are some. Would we be able to, and maybe for our next meeting, could you kind of go back, if you could, just see how we funded it over the past, just so you could see, okay, no, we have them consistent for what we have.
Well, I can tell you right now, we have forty-five hundred dollars that I set aside in School Choice and it pays for like the AP Saturday session, the buses that they have to take to that. It pays for the robotics competition buses. It's basically the buses for the kids that are going for the things like during the school hours. So, I, I mean, I can give you a detail, we can look at it in more detail, but that off the top of my head, yeah.
That would be very helpful, I think, to help answer Lori's question and then make us, you know, really take a look and, and respond to what you've asked. You know, we need to figure out if we should be, if, if we can. I mean, obviously, we have, like, we're under, you know, if, if we did have monies, you know, would that be a place we might think to put them, so?
Right. Well, the other thing, you know, I think what Ryan also is talking about is, you know, you've got, you've got three, four different schools that are fundraising and just because the high school and middle school may know what their fundraisers are doing, you don't know what the, the two elementary schools are doing. So, if I had an, maybe an eighth grader and a third grader, they could be doing a fundraiser at the same time. And once you've hit your neighbors for the eighth grade student, you don't want to send your third grader out with your neighbors and try and get, you know, to buy something from that as well. So, um, that's the other situation that I've actually personally had to deal with. So, I know how frustrating that can be. So, I think, I think that's something that's ongoing and, and I don't know that it's ever been resolved. I know when I was in PTO at the elementary level, I used to come to the school committee and present a list of activities and fundraising. And it was a kind of a calendar of what we were doing in that school. But I haven't seen anybody here since that day on the committee.
I'm writing that down. I'm just, I'm just...
Yeah, no, that's one.
Yes, you know, I don't think, we haven't, I don't think we've ever officially invited them either, so maybe it's time to resurrect being an invitation for them to come and find out what they're doing, work, it might be a nice presentation at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think if, if there was a way, because the other thing, and I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, tongue-in-cheek say this, but I find it funny in some aspects that, you know, there are eight captured souls here who spend time and resources and dedication for the school and all of these students should come to our meetings, they should come anyway, and hit us up with every fundraiser you have. I mean, some of us already have kids, but...
Hey, shh. Listen.
You, you're a lost cause.
Oh, you have already, I have already...
Chris does not want us on my knives.
Donuts, I have.
But, you know, so, it would be, I mean, I, I know I have, you know, two kids at high school, so I'm aware, but, you know, I love shows and I make films and I want it, I send my box tops still. So, you know, what, what is it that's going on? Where can I maybe participate in a fundraiser that I don't know about? So, you know, any way we could figure out, I don't know if there's, you know, a list or we could pop a question to and say, hey, anyone figured out how to do this?
There's got to be.
Yeah. I'll, I've got, I have it written down.
Even if you let us know like a month before, like next month, these are the fundraisers that are going to happen?
Yeah. I, I will, if, just in the interest of just being candid, I, I don't know how that, well, that'll work, because a lot of these do kind of just, lots of people who are well organized, you know, I, I think what I'd like to do is first figure out the mechanics of this, see what I, what we could do in terms of putting, and then it will, will work up to, you know, giving you a heads up. I think, I have to figure out the rest of it, but I, but I will try to do that. I want to figure out how I can best...
Thank you, donuts.
Think, you know, well, we have, I have a box of Krispy Kremes coming apparently, so I'll let you know. But I will do that, I'm going to, I'm going to be on that, figure out how we can, I don't know.
I think part of the people who have been on the committee for a while, we've been asking for this. And so, it seems, you know, we're listening to the answer, but it's maybe the first time we've asked this superintendent. But in the past, we've asked and with all of the programs on the computer, and there shouldn't be that many pop fundraisers, that's part of the problem that we have. And when somebody comes to my door and says, I'm from Narragansett, I'm doing this, you'd kind of like to know that that's what's happening. Usually, they have some sort of identifier with them, but sometimes, so, it's, I guess, you know, it seems to us like this has been a long time coming, but we haven't asked you. So, we're looking...
So, we'll give you like two weeks or four to figure it out.
I'm going to send a survey out.
Yes, please. Yeah, maybe Nikki can help you with that.
Nikki, can you help me?
That's where you go.
Yes.
So, thank you.
The answer there is...
Ricky, badging on your comment about having the kids, you know, there's enough kids in this district that, you know, I would love to see, like you said, I would love to see some kids come in and advocate for themselves on something that they would like to do. You know, if we had some of the kids come in here and say, you know, we would love to go to the Dominican and could you help us with such and such? I, I mean, I don't know what we can do, but I would love to see that happen, you know, for them to talk themselves and advocate for themselves.
Well, if we start providing food.
Yeah.
So, if we all bake some. I'm going to move on just because we do have some other people here who are presenting. And next up is our E, Lean Ring, no, I think that should be Learning, Lizard Bags. I do see this lovely handout that we were given, so you can find that. And Dr. Kazan, you are a guest.
I will certainly, yes. So, we, one, one of the, obviously, one of the major sticking points to our last conversation was, was the information. Come on down, folks, if you could. I'm sorry, Ms. Jilson. And we, we did not have information in hand. We did a lot of talking and we just did not have information. So, what is provided this evening for you, and I, and I have to, I'll have to defer, Ms. Jilson, honestly, is that I, I don't know exactly all the members on the committee. I do not. I don't know them by name, but certainly, the committee exists and this is a representation of the work of that committee. And so, the information that is with you today, we hope, think, is the beginning information that we need to then, you know, go to the next step, whatever that may be in terms of a pilot or otherwise. So, I guess I'll leave it for Ms., I know that Ms. Jilson loves to speak at the committee, so I'm going to allow her...
Especially on the camera.
Absolutely. She almost demands to be on camera, almost all the time.
Backs at the camera, I'm good.
Yes.
We do have a committee. The names of the committee are not in this particular document. We have another document with notes of the people that volunteered. We initially looked for one person or a couple of people from each level and we ended up with so many people that were interested in just participating and being part of the process that we invited anyone that had volunteered to come because it got to a point where it's like, there's always a voice. And so, we brought a group of people together. We met probably five times as a collective group. Lisa and I have some experience from Orange and a lot, and we met with Mahar and I spoke with Terry Thomas, the superintendent over there, who actually piloted this three years ago. I think it's three now, right? This is their third. And so, they kind of were the people that probably took all the fire for it and we were able to parse out and use their data to refine what happened. So, within this document, you see some samples that we were able to, that were shared with us, that we created as samples. Obviously, at the teacher level, they haven't done anything. We're taking information from research across the state and kind of compiling what we think would be a good model. So, obviously, we've been a pilot program. It's been very successful. This year, they've only used two days in, in Orange. Last year, they used the Mahar School Committee, granted five. Peter Sam Elementary School Committee granted seven. And the elementary, Orange Elementary used four, because they have three different school committees, so they, it's, so we literally had to take all those three documents and blah, blah, blah. And then we took Middlesex has information. So, there's many districts in the state that are now looking towards this because what they found is, like, last winter and the winter before, there were so many days that we lost before state testing. And, you know, every day before state testing can be really frustrating on top of the first semester, second semester problem where...
Yeah, AP courses.
And AP courses at, at the high school levels, those all are lost learning days before those high stakes tests that our kids are expected to participate in. So, that was kind of where the, where the idea of e-learning comes from or Blizzard Bags. We call it snow day learning because we were just, so you can, right now, it's snow day learning, Blizzard Bags, e-learning, depending on what level you're talking about.
Or heat day.
Or heat day, you know what I mean? Truly, like inclement weather, like use the word you want, create the own, you know, our own vocabulary with it. So, ultimately, you can see that there's a why behind it. The state regs about instructional hours and days of school and the requirements and the local control that it does have. So, it is, it is okay by the state, for lack of a better words. You can see how we would generally structure it and the benefits of it within the document. You can see how we would structure it at the elementary, middle school level because we don't have a Chromebook, one-to-one goes home. And at the high school, it would be more e-learning where they would be using platforms like Google Classroom and teachers are using that interactive technology for assignments. We can get samples. We actually have some electronic samples that we didn't obviously bring. Questions about specialists, what would specialists do? There's actually maybe the sample, the sample for, we, we put some cover letters for the Blizzard Bags for K and one, but each specialist, so Jim, art, music, health, unified arts, they would each be assigned a particular Blizzard Bag day. So, even their participation, I know that one of the assignments that his teacher assigned was, I think it was snow shoveling, right?
Shoveling snow.
And, and so, they had to take pictures of them shoveling snow and then write, you know, so there was...
Do your heart rate?
And do your heart rate, that's what it was. And so, there's all different ways that they're structured. And we actually have samples that we can share with teachers so they can get some ideas on how it, how it would work. So, you've got the document in front of you. We even were able to use a lot of the question and answers that had arisen. There was a lot of parent input and a lot of parent feedback and community feedback that we were able to take and kind of go, oh, this is how we can structure. So, you've got a, you know, a question and answer thing at the end.
And I was actually on, I was a parent member of the Mahar e-learning committee after the first year when they revisited. So, I was part of that and it was just interesting to be, to be sitting there. to be, to be sitting there and have, you know, the, the parents who were, you know, some thought it was great, some said, oh my god, my kids had too much work, but there were also teachers there too, who were, you know, listening to what people said, what their complaints were, and then you also had your teachers there that were saying, you know, I, if I'm gonna get credit for a day, I'm gonna make sure that I'm doing my job, and so, then it was finding the balance of time, um, and then they sent out surveys to the parents, surveys to kids after the first year, and then tweaked it for year two, and, I mean, the way Maha did it, they, they really came together with it in September, and they implemented that winter, that was their first year, definitely had some hiccups in it, but overall, it was pretty well received, and then year two seemed even better, they had, um, and again, they, they had trained all their teachers at Maha, um, to use Google Classroom, that was like a PD day, so they all learned how to do videos, so even, uh, my daughter last, this winter, um, on a night that school was canceled, the night before, she opens up her, and goes on the assignment, her gym teacher, you know, he just does this funny thing, and he's, he's talking about, you know, what are you doing tonight? Well, this is what, you know, I'm just sitting around watching TV, 'cause I don't have school tomorrow, and so she started to work that night, but then they all have a face with a voice, so it was, it was really neat at the high school level that they had that interaction with the kids to make it more of an online learning course, um, and then the elementaries, they did have, they have actual folders or bags or Ziploc bags or whatever you, the teachers wanna use.
Right, I mean, Peter Sam was using folders, Orange was using, um, Ziploc bags, other communities were doing just similar kinds of things, some of the feedback they got is, the parents didn't really understand or know how long an assignment should take, so you can see on one of the sample cover sheets that each class would get or each child would get in their assignment bag is how long it should take, so that parents can have that estimate, so that they know, well, if my, and, and that was one of the big things they found the first year, is no one really knew how long an assignment should take, and so there were stories of kids working for eight and 10 and 12 hours on Blizzard Bags, which was never the expectation, but they didn't know when was, when enough was enough, and so they literally, teachers will, like, timeout, this should take, and if it takes longer, then just sign off, and if there's confusion with the assignments, here's how you contact, I, we, I took out names and, you know, so that it was more generic, um, but there is that constant back and forth, and teachers are available via email at the elementary level, even though they don't have, um, Chromebooks, the Chromebooks started at six through 12, so kids six through 12 went home with Chromebooks.
I think one of the questions that I think, Rian, you may have asked us the last time, that we had, um, last time we were discussing this, was from the teacher's perspective, we know that they're, I'll say they'll call, and there's, there's some specified, um, but one of the concerns was those parents who, okay, there's a snow day, but you know what, I don't get that, I have to go to work, um, I come home, and now I find my, my student maybe needed additional support, or I needed to get, blah, blah, questions from the teachers, how has that worked with your, I mean, I know, 'cause you both have had experiences, um, and of course you've been on the committee, how does that work? You know, I'm a parent, I get home, and all of a sudden I have to contact the teacher, that's, you know...
Yes, and it's, 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 it's at the elementary level, the kids have about three days to finish the assignments, the very first year they gave them seven, they realized that that was too long, it didn't work, they dropped it down to three in their participation rate, and the quality of the things went skyrocketing up. Same thing happened at Maha, where they were given like seven days initially, and then the teacher feedback, and even the student feedback was, that was way too long, because those assignments were aligned with what they were doing, so at Maha, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was, I'm on the school committee there, so I'm pretty sure it was, now they get their assignments, and they're do the next working day, so that the learning continues, 'cause that's the whole point, is that the learning continues. At the elementary level, a lot of the skill work, or the practice work, or the project work, is, um, review for mastery, or, or, or cycling back, so none of the content the elementary kids are getting are, is novel, whereas with the Chromebooks and that kind of learning, you can almost do the flipped classroom concept, where they can do some learning at home, and then into the class, they're, they're doing the analytical discussions and things like that.
And even the math classes at Maha, they, it wouldn't be new, new material for that, it would be review of what they've been doing, or continuing, you know, practicing what they've been doing, uh, but your, your AP classes, your college, you know, your honors classes, they, like, there was one teacher who was on, and, I mean, he's an amazing English teacher, and people were talking about, and he was one of the teachers that was, he was on the, saying, well, when I teach, if I'm gonna get credit for a day, I want my kids to do what I was expecting, and he said, if I give them three to five days to read, you know, chapter four in a novel or reading, he says, when I go back the next day, so I, it was just nice to have the teacher input, and then the parent input, just have everyone sit there and talk together, but it's really the teacher, depends on the class, but I mean, we, we sat, Shantae and I sat with them back in October, November, and we sat with Marie Cole, who's the curriculum coordinator, and Scott Hamlin, and we were asking all those questions, like, well, what about your kids on IEPs? And, and they came back with their responses, and we have a lot of them right in here, you know, like those kids that are on IEPs, that, that's the special ed teacher's job to meet with the teachers to make modifications, those, you know, those teachers should still be available, um, if there's kids with, um, services like speech and those kinds of things, those services can be made up, but if it was a snow day, they wanna proceed those services anyway, so they can make it up, you know, so, because people worry about, well, what if they're supposed to meet three times a week, well, if it was a snow day, they wanna meet three times a week anyway.
But compensatory services would be provided if needed, or requested, or whatever, so they have all that, and honestly, they said that has not been a concern or a problem at all.
At all.
Like, that is, that is, they, they anticipated it, so they had a plan for it, but they haven't experienced that, so, um, you know, we have some, we have some resources at our disposal, um, we have teachers from there that would be willing to support and help and provide even more samples and guidance.
And Marie is very open to anybody calling her, emailing her, like, I emailed her during one of our meetings, twice I emailed her, and she got back from her like that, so she, you know, they're, they're proud of it, they're very excited about what's, what's become of it, and are willing to share information, meet with us, send teachers to meet with us.
And they've shared all the resources, we have a folder full of, full of information.
Do, was the feedback that they also provided, and I'd be curious too, when we start to look at maybe some of the districts that are doing this, um, it makes perfect sense, time of learning before these tests, have they seen, and I know it might be hard to encompass, but, you know, even if, have they felt that this has made a difference?
I think what they see is the end of the, I'll, I'll speak to what some of the teachers have said, the end of the year is the end of the year, and it's hard, now, they're not wasting time at the end of the year, because you've got kids that are exhausted, they're getting to do the learning, and that, 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 that rollover, like, I mean, last year, how many, we went, how many extra, like, it was a lot, and you get to a point where the kids, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how engaging you are, you are just holding on, and so, um, matter of fact, the English teacher that we're talking about, he's like, I don't have to waste the end of the year, I've got good stuff going on the entire time, and not trying to fill, fill, you know, with fluff.
There's continuity.
There's continuity, we know we have an end date, we know we don't have to go, okay, how are we gonna, you know, because they're not gonna be spent, and they can plan things out, so that's some of the feedback that we've gotten from teachers, um, I think the parent perspective is, they know the end date, so it's not, okay, uh, we're gonna get out on the 12th, the 14th, or the 23rd, you know, so there's a little bit planning for childcare, and this and that, so, yes, there's the working part, but they're home anyways if there's a snow day, but now it's a little bit more productive, and if the teachers are mindful, which I think our teachers will be, they can create some really awesome, authentic learning opportunities in the course of a day, like, people are like, oh, you're taking away their fun and their snow day, no, you can actually do a lot of really amazing learning opportunities within that snow day, that, continue that excitement for learn.
Did Maha make every snow day a Blizzard Bag day?
Well, they, but they, they started out, so like, what we were talking about is, they went with, um, the first, the first five is what they...
They, the school committee granted five snow days, and the school committee said, if you need more, come back to us, but we're only gonna give you five, that was Maha. Peter Sam said, we'll give you as many as you want to go for, Orange Elementary said, we'll give you four.
But one thing we talked about...
That's just what it was, and so, there was always that dance, so one year, Maha used all five, but they had two more snow days, so they were actually authentic, snow days, you don't have to do anything kind of days, so they had five e-learning days, but then there were two real snow days, so there was the discretion of the superintendent based on the weather.
I'm sorry, did their end date change?
Because of those two days, absolutely, that's where that flexibility came in, if it's an e-learning day, the day is whatever the day is, but if they have a authentic snow day, where there's no work expectation for students or teachers, then you get that, you add that day.
But they went for, the first snow day was a Blizzard Bag or a Snow Bag, you know, whatever, Blizzard Bags, Snow Bags, um, they went for it that way, however, the other way that it can be looked at, which we, which I talked to Marie about as well, is, um, looking at your end date as it is, and say, okay, how many snow days do we want, where do we not wanna go beyond, so if you had, just say, for example, getting on a Monday or Tuesday, okay, we don't wanna go beyond that Friday, so then your first three would be typical, you know, your, your regular snow days, and then anything beyond that could be your Blizzard Bag days.
So the state has been the regulation that they suggest three days of snow days before you...
No, they don't, the state doesn't tell you what to do.
Not in their recommendation.
Okay, then, then that's, then that's relatively new.
Right, it's a guidance, they, they are...
They have, they strongly recommend the first three days are snow days, and then after that you can utilize.
But I will say this, that when you write the letter to tell the state that you are look to do this, you give them those parameters, you, you could say three, you could say whatever, they'll, they're going to write, they're going to write you back, they're going to approve it, and, and then, that may be in their guidance, that may be in their response, or it may not, or they just might say, approved, it's, but, 'cause that's what we've heard a couple from other communities, that they've, they've done it different ways, and when they put it in their letter, they've just been given yes, like, honestly, so, just...
In your pilot years, like, in the pilot years, you could recommend that we're going to try three Blizzard Bag days, or three e-learning days within our district, it doesn't have to be five, that's just what they went for.
Right.
But I mean, if you wanna have a pilot year, it's...
And actually, I will say that it's still in pilot stage, it still hasn't become a policy at any of the schools over there, they're, like, it was pilot one, pilot two, this was pilot three, and I'm pretty sure that tonight they're talking about it, and I'm not there, so I can't tell you what the conversation is, um, but for example, you were asking, like, one of the first days, it happened to be a Friday of vacation, like a Friday of February, uh, uh, might have been Christmas vacation, they ended up with snow, so they called that a snow day versus a e-learning or Blizzard Bag day, because there wasn't gonna be any opportunity to check in, so that was, so it wasn't necessarily the first snow day, it, they, 'cause they were doing, you know, they were gonna use five or at the discretion, so she just called a snow day, because it, there was no opportunity to have that accountability at the other end, because you're gonna go into a vacation week, so, you know, that, that were, it was at the discretion of the superintendent, what they would, what it would be called, based on the projected forecasts, so...
Depending on the type of events, you could, you could say, call it an E-day, different neighborhoods, you may not have power, you may not have, um, internet, something like that, so some students may be able to get it electronically, some may not, and you may not know that ahead of time, I'm curious, did you have these discussions with other places?
Yeah, and that's the thing too, and I, I think they said, I don't even think they, they said they never had, they never had the issue, however, it's one of those things too, where the teachers would, would understand that, because they would know that there was, it was something that was out of your control, um, and then the kids in the high, if there are kids in the high school who have the Chromebooks and they don't have internet at home...
And that's actually a real, real thing, in New Salem and Wendell, and Peter Sam, there were parts of those areas that don't have internet access, so...
So typically, if, typically, we know bad weather's coming, so the teacher might say on Tuesday, well, you know, tomorrow's not looking good, it looks like it's going to be, you know, there's a good chance to have a snow day, so I want you to download your e-learning assignment.
So they can download it ahead of time?
They can download it ahead of time, work on it offline, once they get back into, um, as far as the electronic end, once they get into, you know, Wi-Fi area again, it comes up automatically, and if they don't even, if, if they don't have a Chromebook per se, but again, they're a one-to-one, um, everything is, it's still, you can provide the paper.
Okay.
So they have those, there, there's that contingency.
Uh, I have a question, I guess I'm a little confused as to how, um, easy it is for a teacher to be able to get these bags together, 'cause I'm assuming that they wouldn't get a Blizzard Bag, you know, ready for every storm, you know?
No, in the elementary, in the, in the elementary school years, it'll be more of a, that'd be review types of things and practice, and especially, your younger kid, you're not gonna do something that's, you want it to be within their learning, where they, where they can actually do it, um, they create them ahead of time, I know in Orange, they send them home.
Yeah, they, they, they typically have them ready at least a week in advance, but a lot of the learning, especially at the elementary, you can kind of parse out, okay, in December, we're gonna be practicing, you know, we've already taught addition to, to 10, so these kids need to practice it, and so the assignments be around practicing, and a lot of the assignments within their bags are gamed, so, and it, and it's games that they are probably playing already and know how to play, where they can actually go home and teach the parents, and they have that as one of their ways to demonstrate their learning.
And it'd be a perfect use of common planning time for teachers in the beginning months of the school year, grade level, that way all first grade teachers are sending home the same, you know, having, you know, Shantae sending home one batch of work, and I'm sending home something different, that way it's consistent throughout the district, first grade, second grade.
And how would that work with the other grades?
It would work the same way with all the grades.
So, like, if, say, at fifth grade, um, there's a storm coming, and I guess I, I'm...
So if I was a fifth grade math teacher, it would be my, it would be my responsibility to provide something math for, for the kids on my team, um, and then the science teacher, so, you know, everybody, but those teachers still have to have discussions, because...
And coordinate the effort, so they don't have a kid working for nine hours.
You have one teacher that really wants to, you know, give them a lot of work to do, you know, finish a project, and then...
So isn't that a little bit more work on the teacher's end?
Yep, it is, but it's...
It's front-loading the work.
Yeah.
There's a lot of front-loading, and, for example, this year, Maha, or Orange Elementary and Peter Sam, they prepared all their days, they never used them, so they did a lot of planning ahead of time, and it's ready to go, but it didn't get used, so, but, that's the, the give and take of this, because, you know, they're doing the front-loading of the work, um, so, you know...
I'm kinda curious, so was there any feedback on how, nothing to do with the learning aspect, but how, um, in our school, the UFCW felt about it, because they technically, they would end up losing their pay?
No, they don't, because there are things that are required of your support staff, whether it be professional development, or opportunities to fill in that, and we could get deeper into the details of how they do that, but we didn't wanna go that far off. I'll speak to the fact that my husband works at Maha, um, in the kitchen, and they have professional development that they can do, they can do trainings that are available to them to compensate, or they can make up the time, um, at the end of the year, if they choose to do, like, pro, end of the year projects that need to get done, so, there's ways that are working around it, so it's not, it is, they don't lose their pay, they're doing work that needs to be done.
So is this also, now, gonna result in some kind of negotiation effort, if, so that's gonna be part of...
Right, at, at Maha, because, they basically said, this was so teacher-driven, that it has not been a union issue at all, like, they, they have not experienced that, this was just a real, um, a grassroots effort, I, I mean, they had some growing pains, but I think we can, we can learn from their growing pains.
What about the teachers that you have talked to, how are they feeling about these bags?
Here?
It's more the parents.
I think people are pretty excited about it, I think they wanna give it a shot, yeah.
Have we looked at other communities other than, because I know you guys have your hands in the weeds there, so, um, it's, I kinda feel like we have an inside scoop as to how it's worked for them, and I know Maha was one of the first to do it, so that's awesome, um, you mentioned North Middlesex?
North Middlesex, I, I can't think of, it's in the notes, 'cause we, and we have links to them, 'cause we went to their websites, and it's not just in the state of Massachusetts that's doing this, there's, this, this kind of learning is happening across the country, I know in a principal group that I'm a part of, um, we've talked about this kind of thing, so it's like, this isn't, this is, you know, novel for us, but it's...
This is not leading it, this is where behind the...
No, yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's just, like, people are recognizing the fact that the weather's getting in the way, the weather's getting in the way of learning, and how can we continue learning in the 21st century, which we should be able to, because learning doesn't stop if you're not in the building, learning continues no matter where you are, and that's really just taking into that.
And I know there's districts in other states who do e-learning on professional development days, so, so I think, yes, I, yeah.
I just took, to the point, we have our telehealth, Fran, um, that's very new in Massachusetts, we are very, very behind, uh, places like Wisconsin, Minnesota, uh, Montana, who have to do this type of, you know, either through medical, or, or, you know, we do, of course, counseling, a lot of that is done, of course, via the, via the internet, they have to, they, they partnered alongside, I'll call them Blizzard Bags, but a lot of this has to be done, 'cause they have to do a lot of stuff with smaller districts to create one giant district to do a lot of PD, et cetera, so, and the students be participating, so, the research is out there, we are behind, this is not something the Mass has thought of and is leading the way in any regard, I agree.
So I guess the question is, um, you know, where do we go from, what do we need to have in place for the school committee, right, for the school... For the school committee to be able to say, okay, you know, we'd like to go forth with a pilot at some point. Um, this is, I mean, we're the first ever seeing this, so obviously there's been reading to do and probably have some more questions as we read through. Um, and it sounds like there's a lot of, probably some more fleshing out as to what would that look like in our district? Um, and how would it be structured? So, um, I know you said that like in September timeframe is when the decision on how many days and all that stuff. So, um, what?
The very first year Maher did it, they made the decision, decision to do it in November. They came to a November school committee meeting and asked, we want to try this with, I think, a one-pager. And as the school committee, we said, they gave us basically the kind of information that is here, probably not as, not as deep. Um, and we was like, you know what, that sounds like a good plan because of the winter beforehand been pretty brutal. And as a way, and the teachers had to pull these things together within a couple of weeks. That's where the mistakes had been as far as the length of assignments and all that. Because they didn't have a lot of lead time to get it going. But it worked, it happened. And then, you know, from that, they surveyed the parents, they surveyed the kids, and they surveyed the teachers. And through the surveys, they said, oh, this is what we need to tweak. And then did some more and did some more. So that was like the first year, which was really messy, but there was a lot of good learning that happened. And then the second year is when the committees sat down and that's when the real voices. Because there was a lot of frustration because the information wasn't probably clearly communicated as well as it could have been. Cause I think people had an idea of what it was, but it wasn't articulated as well as it could. I think we are in a much better place to articulate expectations because we have seen it in action and so we can do that. Um, but it was really like, the school committee gave the schools the permission to give it a go. And with, with some, you know, you're, you're going to get four days to try it, I think was the first year, and then five days and, and through that. So that's really, I, I'm liking the fact that we're talking about it now so that people can start thinking, how are we going to structure those days as a grade level team to make it good learning? So it's not busy work. We don't want our kids just being, you know, we want it purposeful. And this will give people the opportunity to start like thinking about how can we integrate it? They can look at samples and what people have done. Um, the idea of using Google Classroom at the high school level, the teachers are going to need a little bit of time to really start doing that and teaching, training the kids on how to use it. Um, so we're able to be more thoughtful about it.
So from the committee perspective, as I said, I know this was the, you know, we're just getting this to really read through. Um, do we want to take the time to go through this and formulate some questions? And then ask, um, to you or whoever representing the group to come back, I don't know, next month or in June even?
Sure.
Um, and this way we can have more questions and maybe at the same time, you know, it, I would think it would be beneficial for us to hear, okay, how do you flush this out? Um, because that may answer half the questions that we have, you know, that this is.
Have we surveyed our teachers as to whether or not they want to do this?
We have not done a thing, just because I wanted to make sure.
I would, I think that would.
Yeah, we haven't done, because we wanted to make sure that we could, with this information.
Need your permission in order to.
Yeah, to, to really.
We don't want to give more details.
We can buy that information back and then you can get questions.
Yeah, I think we should do a survey for parents and teachers and so we know what the results are, so that we can.
I'm pretty sure we can probably get a survey.
Cause I'm not sure, I mean, some of the parents I've talked to have heard from other districts and it's not favorable. So they need to get, we need to get their response to know how to educate them. You know, and some of it is, because I've worked all day, I come into three kids and I have this, you know, this hysteria about how this thing is supposed to get done there, on the kid's part.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the parents need to be educated as to what we're even thinking about.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And see how receptive they are to that, as well.
So do we, uh, would we want to reschedule technically for maybe the June meeting? That'll give a couple of months to get some sur, survey out and some responses. And, and if that doesn't work, we can always push it to the August meeting, but I know, um.
When's the June meeting, just so I have a deadline date here?
May, June, it's the 19th, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, the 19th at this point. Um, and then if the information is not available, we certainly can push it again in August.
We can, I'm, I'm certain we can get that done.
You talked about, a little bit about, um, doing some training for the students and for the teachers on the Google Classroom. So after the question that just came up, would we have to do training for the parents as well?
I think that the kids can teach the parents. Google Classroom's pretty user-friendly.
We have some second grade classrooms using Google Classroom.
I was going to say, we, we, our, our elementary kids are actually using Google Classroom on a regular basis.
But teachers might, especially if we want the high school to have some consistency, they may need some training on it just to make sure that, you know, and the way it's presented to the kids is pretty important, you know, so if they.
But I, I think my fear is more the, the parents that, uh, you know, that are coming home and, and are coming home and say, okay, now I have to teach my children. And if they don't know anything about Google Classroom, is that just going to be another, um, reason for them to not want it?
I think first, let, let's just assume just for a minute that, that we, the folks have internet. Just let me just go that far and say that what I already know, because someone, I don't know, maybe the superintendent had to figure out what Google Classroom was. Um, and it, you know, first off, Google has the instructional videos that they have this, it's a little, it's a little question mark up in the Google. But YouTube literally must have, I, I can't even begin to tell you how many instructional videos. But it's a good question for our tech team, because they would want to make sure whatever video or whatever, uh, you know, would be available. But I will tell you, they are very, they're excellent for those folks who may or may not know anything about Google Classroom. Um, so to that, to the answer, yeah, they won't have to really come in to be trained, although we can certainly offer a night for that. Uh, but they could just literally in the comfort of their own homes, and I can tell you that from, from personal experience, that they could do a tutorial.
Well, that could be one of the first assignments a kid has, show your parent.
That's right. See. Well, we could probably do that before, we have a blizzard bag day.
Yeah, yeah, we would definitely do that, yeah, we wouldn't want to build a plane as we're flying.
Learning platform on a daily basis, they'd just be using it at home for those learning days.
I thought in the high school, most of the classes are already using Google Classroom.
Yes.
Yes.
From what I understand, so I think that.
But it can go, it can go deeper and it's, it's pretty interactive. And, um, I, I have to say that I was pretty impressed by some of the videos. Because in the second year that Maher did it, they literally came up with, so that there was like a standard, and even that, um, cover sheet, they, they, they needed to standardize how the work would look. So everyone had the same expectations for, um, you know, so everyone, so they were, had a framework. And so I think in the Google Classroom, they had to have, did my writing, it had to be odd, they had to be an audio piece. Um, it had to have the written directions and whatnot. And so teachers have gotten really creative. And, you know, the ones that are, you know, crazy to begin with, and I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean that, you know, the, the videos are really fun, fun for the kids to watch. And it's very purposeful in their learning, the ones that I've seen.
I don't, I don't want to kill it, but let me just go back. Dr. Sevadil was talking earlier about, um, some of the families that have language barriers. Have we taken that into account as well?
I can answer that.
Kind of goes with that.
Google.
Google, okay.
Google translates, um, as I learned, uh, also, uh, going through all this. They, now granted, every, yes, documents can be translated, directions can be translated. And I forget how many hundreds of languages.
And, and Google Translate is getting really good because apparently it's changed my name in somebody's email just recently.
Yes, yes. So I have to tell you that, again, I'm not a walking Google commercial, but it, they have, they have thought, they have thought of quite a bit, honestly, quick one.
Somehow my name can.
Google Translate is unbelievable, so, yes.
And for any day we use, will the superintendent be doing an introductory video?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sorry, those videos.
Bring back the light warmers.
All right, so before this conversation gets too out of hand.
There you go.
So I, I think we have a charge for a survey. Let's get some information to bring back. We'll take some time, read through this, um, and have any questions. Um, if anyone has any questions that they want to get in beforehand, we'll send them to Dr. Kaz.
Yeah, and then that way we can get them answered out without like, just be prepared with answers versus like, oh, I don't have that answer because I wasn't prepared to answer that question. That'd be great.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's eight o'clock and there are some things I don't want to miss, but it's already two hours. Can we look at this?
Um, we're going to go through most of these very quickly, but, um, district treasure update, where we had initially spoken about, um, our treasurer, um, giving us an end date at some point. We have just got an update that, that is.
There is no end date.
There is no end date. So that one, that is the update, we're good. Um, school start times, um, very quickly, I have attended a couple of sessions on school start times, talking about the science of sleep and some other things. I have a bunch of information to share with the committee, um, but many schools are looking to do this. Um, there's a lot of really good data on why it's important and the benefits of doing so. So, uh, in the interest of time and also because I didn't have time to get my information scanned in and available, I will put together some resources for everybody to look at. And, um, at the next meeting, if, hopefully we have time, if not, in the June meeting, um, I'm hoping that maybe the committee would like to charge Dr. Kaz with doing some informational things to find out about school start times. I did attach the North Middlesex presentation to Word doc so you can see that by a sleep specialist and, and all the data there, but there's some really good stuff out there. Um, do we have any public input? I guess not. Uh, NDA, Ms. Parker just left.
Ms. Parker's left.
Add here, uh, school committee comments, anyone have any comments?
I thought the music was very good, well done, and I enjoyed it.
A lot of fun.
The focus is an awesome job and, uh, we had, um, ME TG, for those who don't know. It's the Massachusetts Initiative for Children. Uh, they came in, they were getting, they were all positive on Saturday night, uh, all positive. And then, um, they're also, I'm sure that they're, well, they're paying awards for ME TG. And they will be getting a written application as well, so that's fun. And then they're, I think, they're.
Congratulations to the cast and crew.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Very good.
Awesome.
Anyone else? So I have, I have a comment, and no one more shocked and surprised. And I actually had to write it down because I could talk for an hour on this. Um, so I'm trying to consolidate my commentary. Um, as most everyone is aware, the budget that the Maryland Regional School District certified is made from March 6th is $20,383,102 and it resulted in a significant increase in the allocations to both Templeton and Philpston. And the school committee did not arrive at this budget number without much debate and consideration. In fact, we met many, many hours to go over various funding scenarios and what each of those scenarios would mean to ensure a quality education to every student in this district. In fiscal year 2020, uh, this district has faced many challenges and opportunities as well as the long-awaited and much-anticipated opening of the new Templeton Center Elementary School. Costs to allow us to open the new elementary school as well as those associated with continuing to provide that quality programming and instruction to our students will weigh heavily against the financial burden that will be placed on our member towns. And in the end, the school committee certified that budget of $20,383,102 unanimously. And it's a budget that the committee feels best represents the funds, best represents and funds the supports needed to ensure every student in this district succeeds. We asked our superintendent, Dr. Kazvent, to be the voice of the committee to communicate to the community staff, parents, and anyone else that was interested or would just maybe listen to him at times. Um, what makes up the fiscal year 20's budget for the district? Uh, he's attended countless meetings, held many meetings of his own, many cupcakes, um, to present, discuss, and communicate the needs of this, this district and how the fiscal year 20 budget represents the funding required to meet those needs. And I can't express thanks enough to Dr. Kazvent and his staff for the time and effort they committed to ensuring this message from the district is clear, consistent, and most importantly, presented in a way that was easy to understand. But I would be remiss at this point in time, as a member of the school committee, if I didn't offer my own comments, which are follows. So first, um, I just wanted to address the opening of the new, uh, elementary school in Templeton. As I said, it's been much anticipated and we're very excited about it. But there was a misconception, I think, out there that the additional monies needed to open the new school were not anticipated for, um, which is far from the truth. And as evidenced by the charge of the school committee to the superintendent to form the Informative District Reorganization Advisory Committee two years ago, this was something that the district knew would have an impact on not only our students, but also our budget. We knew that expenses for things like utilities and maintain, maintenance, items that we took out of the budget when we shut the old Templeton Center building down would need to be incorporated back into the budget when that building opened. We also suspected that additional staffing needs would be required, which is one of the reasons we asked for that District Reorganization Advisory Committee to be formed. We needed to vet those items out so we could prepare the budget for the items for that new school open. So yes, the district was aware of and anticipated the needs that opening the new Templeton Elementary Center school would require, but these items could not be budgeted until the dollars were needed, which is going to be fiscal year 20. Second, I wanted to comment on not what this budget represents. I think we've all been through that, met a number of times. Um, you know, we've put the towns in a position to ask for Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides, totaling approximately $1.1 million in override monies. But I wanted to focus on what is, what not passing this budget means. Because of the way the laws are written regarding regional school district finance, if the overrides do not pass in either town, there's a very good chance we're going to cross the July 1st date, which is the beginning of the new fiscal year. And if without an approved operating budget, Dr. Kazvent will be required to contact the Commissioner of Education and let him know that we do not have an approved budget. And that kicks off something called the 1/12 scenario, which has been brought up before. But essentially, the commissioner is going to tell us, we need to operate at 1/12 of what our fiscal year 19 budget is. There's some caveats about some other things, but essentially that's what you're working with. Since that places us in an immediate deficit, we'll be faced with having to consider making some cuts and changes to the district immediately to ensure that any potential reduction to our current certified budget request can be realized. What this looks like in terms of reductions comes mostly from staffing positions. Uh, and some initial analysis has that at a possible 19 positions is what we're looking at. And the only way to achieve the bulk of that reduction is to combine classrooms, which will ultimately lead to the elementary classes being taught at the new Templeton Elementary School, since busing and logistics also have to factor in because they have a financial impact and they need to be considered. I want to stress that the school committee has not voted to take any actions like this at this point, since we are optimistic that the towns of both Templeton and Philpston will vote to approve our budget. But we have asked Dr. Kazvent and his staff to begin looking at what will need to be done if we are faced with an unapproved budget. Lastly, I just want to comment on how broken the education funding system in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is. There's been much talk of the ERC, the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and the implementation of the recommendations. There's a new Promise Act that promises relief to some, but perhaps not all districts, uh, plus many other initiatives and amendments that have been put forth and mostly voted down when it comes in front of our legislators. If anyone interested can go look and see what happened Monday night when the House took all of the amendments for additional education funding and voted every single one of them out. I could easily point to the full funding of regional transportation, which never happens, since the legislators gave themselves a subject to appropriation clause so they could not be held to the standard that they committed to the regional school districts. No matter where the funding for schools end up coming from, the true funding source is us, the taxpayers. When faced with a legislature that refuses to cut programs and spending to fund those programs that are in need, all new spending ultimately gets passed on to us, the taxpayers. Either through direct taxes, maybe like an increase in a sales tax, or quieter ones that are passed on to certain industry segments, which will only ultimately get passed back on to the consumers who are us, the taxpayers. When we vote for this override money for the school district, we are retaining local control of where we want our tax monies to go. And for me, this type of active decision-making for my tax dollars is how I want my money to be spent. If we rely on the state to implement changes, we're at the mercy of what programs they put in place and the possibility of no real relief. So as always, if anyone has questions on the comments, concerns on the budget, they certainly can contact Dr. Kazvent. Any one of us on the school committee is knowledgeable and willing to speak to anybody on that. And with that, I just thank you for your time. New business, school choice vote for FY '20.
Uh, quickly, what I, what I would request from the committee is to one, um, vote in the affirmative to allow school choice. Um, and, but given a, a variety of scenarios that we've discussed because of the budget, um, you know, at the elementary level, we are, we don't, first off, we're full, but, but we don't know what the outcome will be ultimately. Um, so secondly, I, I would, uh, we do have, I, I believe it's 10, I, at this point, I'm not, I don't have the list in front of me. have the list in front of me, but at the middle and high school for next year, and we certainly do have the room there for those students. So really a kind of a two-pronged request.
Right, so I would entertain a motion then, the Narragansett Regional School District should participate in the school choice program for the school year 20.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passed unanimously. Based on Dr. Kazan's comments, the motion that will be made based on the recommendations that we would open up school choice at the middle and high school levels at this point in time, we will reevaluate monthly as we always do, but the middle and high school at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to do so. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passed unanimously. Thank you. Superintendent report.
Very quickly, we finished up our last community meeting. I think there was eight, we had a total of eight. We call them cupcake and coffee meetings, et cetera. We had, I thought we had a very good turnout over the eight. The information certainly has been received and we move forward on that, quite frankly. So want to thank the folks who have come out and have taken the time out of their busy schedules to ask very important questions about how this budget will affect their, the community and the schools. On that, I will tell you that for the first time, and I think it was very productive, I had a meeting with both town administrators yesterday and we really flushed out a lot of, although, you know, we've been talking the same, you know, the same tune, singing the same tune. It was, it was good to have all three of us in the same room to make sure that we were all on the same page. And I, you know, and we're understanding at least of what the impact would be if the override does or does not happen. Short of that, again, we've talked quite a bit about it, we will, so I won't go any further. I will, you know, I want to just go back to the report, the, our financial report. It cannot be, it cannot be lost, I would hope. When he talks about the financial stability, when he talked about school choice, and he talked about END, and he talked about how although we were still spending more, we were making more, making, we were receiving more funds. First off, that is a direct correlation and to the team that I have. You are not financially stable unless you have the people who do an excellent job at what they do. We are focused, we are driven, they work very hard at this, they know how important it is, and they take it very seriously. And I could not be, first off, that was, that was a good moment to hear, you know, at least, it was, it was a good moment because we've worked very hard in order to be financially stable. Secondly, I would say that when we start talking about school choice, it's an important factor in how we do business. It is a very important factor. If we do, we are attracting, as he said, it is, it is certainly more than a corollary for me, but for a money guy, I'm sure it's just a corollary, about what the interest is in this district. I said it again, I said it eight times, I said it more than that. The reason why people who have access and they have the mobility to really bring their children anywhere choose us, Narragansett, because they don't move them to unsafe places. They move them to where they're being educated and they are physically and emotionally safe, and we do that very well. I would love to take credit for all of this school choice, I would love to, but I cannot because it's really the, it is because of the teachers that we have. That is our strength. We have currently 60 people on a list that now exists for school choice, 26 of them are kindergartners. People do not move kindergartners into a place that they do not, they don't, they don't think they're going to stay for a while. That is a missed, that's going to be a missed financial opportunity if I just put my financial hat on, just with that. But we are a place that people want to bring their children because, sorry, not sorry, we're very good at what we do. And by we, I really mean the teachers and the staff of this district. So that's why this budget is important. And I, and I cannot thank the group that keep a very, very close eye on the bottom line for keeping us, keeping me out of trouble and out of jail. So, thank you.
I think this month will pass on Curriculum Instruction Update, I think they agreed on, left it on just in case anything came up, but nothing to report on. Subcommittees, if you have nothing to report on, I will read the list, just say no report and we'll move on. Academic administrative?
It's what we talked about today.
Okay. Finance, we've talked finance in the face, so we're good. Facilities?
We did meet, but there's a couple things going on, there's nothing major to report.
Policy, I know we have some second readings and then some first readings.
We do. Do you want me to go right through them? You have the ball in front of you, but I will quickly go. Second reading, I would, are the following policies. IHBG, and it's an update for homeschooling, updates the policy for legal references and it removes procedure. IHBGR proposed new, it's homeschooling again, new policy that includes references to legal and oversight of the homeschooling program. Actually, you have all this, I don't think I really need to read them. It's right, it's in the minutes, it's been in the minutes, so.
So...
I'd like to entertain what you want to say.
Say, is the, is the committee okay with passing on the full reading of all of the explanations?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take that as unanimous. So I'll go for you. So I would entertain a motion to approve the following policies for second reading and implementation. IHBG, homeschooling, IHBG-R, homeschooling, IHBH, alternative school programs, IHCA, summer school, IHD, adult community education, IJ, instructional materials, IJI, textbook selection and adoption, and IJJ, supplementary material selection.
So...
I have a first, do I have a second? I have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passed unanimously.
Okay, and then we have a whole list for first reading, many are deletions. IJLA is an update and it's library resources. IJM proposed for deletion special interest material. IJNDD proposed update policy on social media. IJOA proposed update field trips. IJOA-1 proposed for deletion field trips. IJOB proposed update community resources persons, persons and speakers. IKAP proposed for deletion grading assessment systems. IKAB proposed for deletion report, guides, progress reports. IKB proposed for deletion homework. ICAC proposed for deletion class rankings, grade point, grade point averages. IKD proposed for deletion honor rolls. IKEA proposed for deletion academic incentive penalties. IKF proposed update in its graduation requirements. IKZ proposed for deletion letters of recommendation. IL proposed new, it's an evaluation of instructional programs. IMI proposed new teaching activities and presentations. IMB proposed update teaching about controversial issues, controversial speakers. IMD proposed update school ceremonies and observances. IMDB proposed for deletion flag displays. And IMG proposed update animals in school. And you can look at those online or you can look at the explanations underneath what you have in your minutes and I'd like a motion for accepting them as a first reading.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Opposed, abstained, district...
Thank you very much.
Right. And that is, I think, almost all the eyes are done. We just have J and K left guys, so...
Good for you, did a lot of work.
Long-term planning?
Um, nothing to report.
The Templeton Elementary School, any?
Building should be done by June 1st. Except for the budget, that we have the school staff, site work should be done by July 1st.
Except for the clock.
Except for the clocks not going in there. They don't, it's not going in. So we'll expect a full update on what to do with that.
We already know, we already know what's going on.
You what?
Statue of...
I was wondering, because that's...
We have something else going there?
Statue of...
Why? How does they get to keep the clock? It came out of that script.
It came out of the old...
It's a selectmen's thing.
They voted and then they re-voted.
Selectmen, yeah.
Because, because it's only the kids and the staff that get to see it.
All the parents that come in for activities and stuff, really, it doesn't matter?
It's stuck in a corner in the office.
All right, where are we on the Philpston?
Okay, Philpston, Philpston Building Committee.
Very brief, again, we did need two of the big things going on. We are moving forward with a sprinkles study for the, to sprinkle the building. We are moving forward with the HBAC study for the replacement of the air handling units on the roof. The emergency generator has been installed, we're waiting to test it and do some final lookups. And as of right now, that's, we're moving forward with some other stuff, but those are really the big ticket items.
There's no correspondence to review. Next meeting is Wednesday, May 22nd. Make sure that you take the original meeting, which would have been the first Wednesday after, it's before, yeah, before the Philpston Town meeting where we normally reorganize with a change in the election date. Remember, we don't have that meeting anymore, now it's the 22nd. And we'll do all our business and it will be here in the Kiva. And that's it. Executive session, I know there is one item that we just, we do need to discuss, so I would take a motion to enter executive session for reason number three, discuss strategy with respect to litigation or bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and if the chair slips, declares, the meeting will not return into open session immediately following. I, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have one, and do a second?
Second.
A second. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Matson?
Aye.
Ms. Triplo?